To the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's do roll call. Claudia?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
John?
Here.
Tracy Allen?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Al?
Here.
How about Jesse?
Here.
How about Noel?
Here.
And Joshua?
Here.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies of which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the vision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having the daytime in place thereof sent to the record, the Ridgewood News, and the Town News newspapers, the constituent borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school districts' principals' offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to fine not to exceed $100. Okay.
Hey, Joe? Please.
The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community in an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, and to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards.
Thank you, Joe. We'll move into public comments on agenda items only. And as always, there will be a segment at the end of the meeting for public comments on anything else related to the Riverdale Regional School District. So Mark, if you will facilitate any comments from the public?
If please raise your hand, and I will tell you to unmute. We have, we have no comments.
Nothing, okay. Thank you, Mark. There are no presentations tonight, so we'll jump into the student member report, and we'll switch it up. We'll have Noel go first.
I think everyone's just getting kind of excited for the senior events like prom and everything, and I think everyone's kind of like winding down for the end of the year. But I know a lot of like people in our grade have been talking about how excited they are.
Sounds good. How about Joshua?
Um, yeah, I agree with Noel. I think after the whole senior class, really excited, I know enrollment, like school seems to be like in-person enrollment in my classes seems to have been increased, and yeah, everyone's really excited for the senior events and having senior sports too, semi-normal environment.
Very good. Jesse?
Yeah, like I've been going into school the past two weeks, so it's good seeing like a lot more people like there in person. It's kind of fun, like more normal seeing everyone, so that's been good.
Okay. Sounds like things are getting back to normal, or as much as we can. My report tonight, I'm just gonna, I, last year, last meeting rather, I read a list of some of the year-end events, and I see the first one was the junior prom. And I did get a chance to stop into the courtyard at the beginning of the prom and just want to offer congratulations to the, the folks that made the courtyard look very presentable, and it looked like everybody was having a nice time. You know, I only stopped in for about five or 10 minutes, and Mr. Pepe was present, but it looked, it was very nicely done, so kudos to everybody involved in that. I did miss the senior barbecue. I had a work conflict, and it's probably just as well, because I heard that was well-received and everyone had a good time at the senior barbecue. I also did get a chance to go see the production of Mamma Mia Friday Night, and it always amazes me at the talent that the building, you know, has. The kids did a great job. It was a very large production. It was very well done, and, you know, kudos to everyone involved in that as well. There's a lot of things coming down the pike. I know Mr. Pepe has sent out emails outlining the activities, and I hope everything continues to be as successful as the few things we have done already. I would like to share this platform with Stephanie if you want to report on a delegate, or you want to save that for the end of the meeting, it's up to you.
I'll save it for the end of the meeting.
Okay. Perfect. Patrick, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have a couple of items, gonna kind of be all over the place for a little bit, so bear with me, because they're somewhat unrelated to one another. Like Mr. Graff said, I did attend the play as well, and as I indicated to a couple of people already, it was a very uplifting time for, for me in particular, to see the students fully engaged as they were. I walked out of the, of the event feeling really good about things, and even when I got home, my wife says, "You look happy for a change," and I, and I was. The kids did a great job, and kudos to Mr. Wilson and his team for putting that together. What an inclusive and happy event it was. On the road to return, shall we say, I have been investigating with Mr. Wachter's help and Mr. Trainor's help how a return to in-person board meetings. And I'm recommending to you as a board that we begin that at our next board meeting, which is June 7th. The, creating an infrastructure where we would still be able to have remote participation in a real-time event is difficult and would be expensive for us to do. However, what we can do is stream the event now, because one of the improvements that we made to the buildings is, is being in a position to stream events during the COVID pandemic that we weren't able to do before, sports events, things like that. So what I'm gonna, what I am recommending is that we return to in-person Board of Education meetings effective June 7th, and that in addition to the students filming the, the meeting for rebroadcast later that week, but that we also stream it live through our YouTube event. And that would also be the time where we would have, at that meeting is when we have our service recognition awards, so I think it's a really good time and appropriate, just depending on how many people we would have come into the facility. We may have to move the meeting to the cafeteria just so that we could space out a little bit, but we'll be able to do that time and event when we get closer to July, sorry, June 7th. Continuing our return, as we all are aware, the governor made, had a news conference today, made another series of announcements, which certainly were very encouraging for the state of New Jersey and for us moving forward. They were immediately followed by revised guidance that came from NJ SIAA regarding sports. I'm just continuing to reserve my judgment and reserve the direction of further guidance until we get a clarification from the Department of Health regarding how schools are affected. Why I'm saying that is because last week, the governor made an announcement regarding outdoor activities and outdoor masking. And immediately, it was an assumption that that implied affected everybody. On Wednesday of last week, late Wednesday, we received guidance from the Department of Health that indicated that that did not affect schools, nor did it affect school-related events, even if they were being held outdoors, there still needed to be a mask until afternoon. So the current guidance that we're operating under is that if you're on school property between school hours, you're supposed to be masked. And that came directly from the Department of Health, it's on their website, it's very clearly written for change. So before we react to what the announcements were today, as far as schools are concerned, we're going to continue to wait to collect the guidance from the Department of Health as it comes down. What makes things so difficult here at Riverdale is the fact that we have a high school, which is located in Oradell, which contracts with the Bergen County Department of Health. River Edge is its own health department and contracts with a different agency. In fact, there's seven different health jurisdictions, I think it's seven, in Bergen County. So you could conceivably have seven different sets of guidance that's, that a high school, depending on where they're located, has to follow. But, but for us, it's the Department of Health and then the local Department of Health, which is the Bergen County Health Department. So we should anticipate clarification on this guidance certainly this week, and I remain hopeful that, that it will continue in the direction it's going, which certainly would lead to a very pleasant culminating event, which is graduation scheduled for June 24th. I'd like to shout out to Tiffany Correa, one of our, Correa, excuse me, one of our aides administrative supervisors here at the high school, the middle school. On last Thursday, she ran a community book club, and the subject was the book My Perfect Life, as written by Lucas Wolf. It had to deal with mental health and depression. There were a little bit more than 30 people that participated, students, community members, staff members, et cetera. And Lucas Wolf was the feature of the event, and it was very well handled, very well done. Our students participated well. Tiffany handled the, the whole process in a great, in a great way, including the icebreaker for all the people who were participating, which was just, I thought, a very good event. I suspect that the book club will live on in some other way, shape, or form as we move forward. And finally, as Jesse, Josh, and Noel said, you know, enrollment's climbing. We're, we were just shy of 400 students in the high school today, which is a great mark for us. It's the highest mark we had all year, which is a great opportunity. The middle school seventh graders came back today, so the middle school is, is, I don't have a count for them today, but it was, you know, pretty well attended over there. And what we're seeing happening, and which is something that other districts did or didn't do, if you will, is they, they sent out a note saying, "If you're gonna return to in-person, you have to return, or you're not, you can't come back." We've been flexible with that, so what's happening is that as more students return and they see more of their peers return, we're getting some people who originally said they weren't going to come back, the in-person learning coming back. So that's a little bit more than 40% of our community is returned to school. I'm very pleased with that. It was pleasant to be in the building and be around them, and I suspect it will bode well as we continue for our end-of-year activities going forward.
What are, we're, we're hearing a lot about what's happening with the seniors, but the, the underclassmen, like are you finding that the freshmen are starting to orient this to be their building, because they, they, they really haven't had that whole freshman experience? Are you, are you, are the juniors looking to be the, you know, big people on campus next year? Like what, what, what kind of vibe is going on with the underclassmen?
Yeah, it's a great question. I, I think the vibe is one of hope, quite frankly. The seventh grade and the freshmen had a disadvantage, because the seventh grade was new to the middle school, the freshmen new to the high school, and they didn't quite get the experiences that they've done before. However, is a way to offset that, both, both the high school and the middle school are planning for weekly opportunities during summertime to have students come to the building, reorient themselves, do kind of a scavenger hunt type of approach, so that kids will become familiar with the buildings before they walk in the door. I'm hopeful that, that the resilience and the grit that our kids have shown so far will carry through to when they return, that they'll be excited to get back into some kind of groove, shall we say. You know, I have to be the skeptic in chief, because I always have to throw the wet blanket out there saying, "I'm, I am certain that there will be some restrictions for the fall. I don't know what they're gonna be yet." My biggest challenge and question will be, are you masked or unmasked? What's the penetration of vaccination into the student population? For Riverdale, it could be a really extraordinary experience, because 12 and older encapsulates a just old, just un, almost 100% of our population. There's a couple of kids who would enter the middle school and not be 12 yet, but it's very, very, very few, you count them on one hand, so we could be in a very extraordinary situation. And if there are anything like our faculty and our staff, staff in general, we're well over 80% of our faculty, staff, support staff, et cetera, that are fully vaccinated at this point, and I think that's had a tremendous impact on our ability to be more reactive since the end of April. So I'm, I, I'm very hopeful that we'll be moving forward. I think the other challenge will be lunch period, lunchtime, what's the guidance on that? But I am very hopeful that it'll filter down to schools for us to go forward. That's it.
Okay. Let's hop into the committee reports. Budget and finance, Joe?
Yep. Just making sure I was unmuted. We have not met Al or the rest of the, the board, but our plan is, and I do see that our new BA is in the crowd, we're looking to actually have a meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks, if Tom can actually do that, to help with a little bit of the transition, as opposed to the first budget and finance being one of the first things that, you know, our new BA goes through. And, and if I could, I know this has nothing to do with budget and finance, but last, last meeting, Patrick had, had mentioned this, and one of our student reps wasn't here, so I just want to say congratulations to Jesse and the boys' golf team for being state champs, so just wanted to give you that shout-out, Jesse, while you're actually in the meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manzeli.
Thanks, Joe. Facilities and security, Doug?
We have not met since the last meeting, and gonna be talking to Tom about setting up a meeting in the coming weeks also.
Okay. Community relations and technology, John?
We haven't met since our last report.
Okay. Curriculum, Claudia?
Sorry. Nothing to report?
Okay. Finally, policy and governance, Stephanie?
We haven't met. There's a second reading of a policy on today, and I, to bring in a little bit of delegate assembly, it seems like they'll be doing a review of some of the, I think, the 100, the 1,000 series and some other policies before the November delegate assembly to look for changes and stuff. So I, so I have a feeling in the fall, we'll be getting a lot of those little nuanced changes that we'll end up incorporating or adopting. Perhaps, perhaps the current committee, or perhaps after reorg, the, the new committee would be tasked with that.
And can you, the 1,000 series, can you tell people what that would? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought maybe you knew it all.
I have no idea. How, what's the 1,000?
The 1,000 series.
It's like committees.
Administrative.
Right. It's committees and stuff like that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, let's move into the consent agenda. May I have a motion for consent?
I'll make a motion, it's Claudia.
Okay.
I'll second it. Stephanie?
Okay, Stephanie, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Nothing, okay. Tom, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay. The first vote is going to be under appointment. Number one, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Robert Urbanevich as the middle school principal, tenure track, effective July 1, 2021, for the 2021-2022 school year, at a salary of $160,000. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, it's Stephanie. I'm sorry, Allen.
I'll second it.
Okay. Stephanie? Allen? Anybody have any comments or questions here?
Before we vote, if nobody has comments or questions, I wanted to thank the people who were involved in the screening process. We had four different rounds of screening, which included a paper screen, then a short interview, then there was a longer panel interview, and the board did pull interviews. We had a very robust pool of candidates, over 38 candidates that came forward, three excellent finalists, and we're very happy to bring Robert forward to you. He, Mr. Friedman, will remain with us for most of the summer, given the provided transition, so I do anticipate a smooth year. Having said that, as we welcome Robert, we can be in a position to say goodbye to Richard, because Richard's been here for 18 years as a principal. He started back with us in August of 2003. And I hope, 2006, I'm sorry. Anyway, he's been here 18 years, I'll get it right one of these times. We'll honor him again next week when we, or next board meeting, when we see all our retirees, but, you know, Richard came to us and helped us build a lovely, compassionate middle school for our students, and he's laid a great foundation for Robert to come in and move forward. So congratulations to both of them, one beginning our career, his career, at the Riverdale and coming to close, closure, but I know Richard will still remain busy working with young people as we go forward.
Pat, I want to echo your sentiments. This is John. The committee work was excellent, and I'm glad he came to a nice conclusion committee-wise.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay. Tom, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes, and welcome to Riverdale. Okay, the second vote is under number 12, miscellaneous. A, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the second reading of the following bylaw. 9,000 Series, 9121, Election and Duties of the President.
Stephanie, I'll make a motion.
Claudia, I'll second.
Okay. And this is open to the public for any questions or comments. Mark, if you see anything out there?
Please raise your hand if you have a question or comment. Nothing at all.
Okay. Tom, when you're ready, please.
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
No.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
No.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
No.
Joe?
No.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al?
I have, I was the swing vote here last week on the first reading, and, and I was kind of in between a yes and a no, and I have a little explanation for my vote here tonight. I wanted to do a little more research in this, on this subject, and I had, Patrick was able to supply me with the Board of Education officers dating back to 1956. I wanted to see if there was any kind of information that could be gathered here that would help me solidify my vote, and I'll just go back to the year 2000, and how long the presidents have sat in the chair. The first, from 2000, it was two years, the next president was three years, then it was two different presidents, then it was three years, two years, one year, five years, and now myself in my third year. I basically have made the decision that, and somebody may have said this earlier, if it isn't broke, don't break. Every January during reorg, we, we have an opportunity to elect whoever we want to sit in the president and vice presidency. So I'm gonna vote no here on this bylaw. Now we're going to the third vote, under 13, Finance and District Operation. D, the superintendent at the requested board secretary recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending April 2021.
This is Joe, I'll make that motion.
This is Allen, and I'll second it.
Does anybody have some questions or concerns here? Tom?
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay. Let's go into items for board discussion. Old business, new business?
So I'm gonna report a bit on the delegate assembly that was on the 15. It was a virtual meeting, which had its ups and downs, but they didn't have to travel early in the morning, so that's definitely an up. So they gave a legislative update on regionalization, a bill passed the Senate. You know, this comes, this comes, comes up again all over the state, you know, from time to time, but the two main things that, that came out was there may be money for districts who are interested in seeing whether or not it is feasible for them advantageous. There may be money to do an assessment, which has always been a hindrance to certain areas to go forward, because that can run you easily $5,000 to $10,000 to, to do a full assessment of whether or not that would be advantageous for somewhere to change their regionalization that they're in. And regardless of anything that happens in the state or any assessment, it will always be voluntary and voter, voter decision. So there will be, over time, there have been conversations about whether or not that would be a forced issue, and at the moment, this bill solidifies that it would not be a forced issue around the state, that it would still always remain in the hands of the voter.
For now.
For now. That's, that's what this does. And then New Jersey school boards, you know, pivoted online, as so many places did, but they really expanded sort of their academy of services that they were providing, and they continue to improve upon that, and they're going to continue to make that available as an online learning tool for both board members and board members and CE's for certain things, many things for education professionals. So they were very happy and proud about that, and people should stay tuned or continue to log on if that's of interest. They adopted the minutes, they voted on leadership positions, and then there was the two resolutions to which I sent everybody, sort of the shortened version Al had sent to me. The first one came out of South Orange Maplewood, was related to additional highlighted support and services to students who are in the L T plus arena, and that passed, sort of, overwhelming, overwhelming. There was a slight tweak to it in the second section, they asked words, but not limited to, to make it expand even greater. And then the second resolution, which had a lot of discussion and debate, was about mandatory training for non-lawyer parent advocates as it relates to special education. And if you've never been in the special education process, and I think for some people it got very muddled by using the word "non-lawyer parent" because I think people thought that meant parents were going to be required to have training. That's not what it relates to. It relates to people who are not attorneys that parents bring into their IEP process or any conversation related to special education that are serving as an advocate in that special, in that very distinct role. So it's not even somebody that you bring in to the room with you as a support person. It's somebody who is brought into that room under the address of being an advocate.
I.e. a psychologist, or?
No, no, that, those are professionals that have their own, they come in as a professional person and they give their, so it's a very, it's a very narrow criteria of people that could come into that room, that this would apply to. And the resolution was including funding for the training, and it was really meant to be sure that when somebody represents themselves as a non-lawyer, a parent advocate in that process, comes in as your advocate in that process, that they are up to date on all the laws and all the regulations and everything that was, that was, that is in tail in that because they're coming in a very specific role for something. So again, it's not related to you as a parent, it's really somebody who's coming in as an advocate. And again, if you've never been in that process, it seems like just like it was an overstep, but in the end, it did pass, the resolution did pass. And I have been in that room, and so I understood how many players can be in that room and how confusing that could be and who that person might be. And so I, and I had asked all of you, you know, your opinion, of course, but I was supportive of the concept of that being required of somebody who's not a lawyer and hasn't had all that training and isn't getting that professional development, who doesn't have access to those additional accreditation that they might have. And again, it doesn't apply to anybody who's a professional in another capacity, a medical doctor, a psychologist, a psychiatrist, none of that's, it's not required for them, and it's not required for me to bring in my friend who's just there to support and listen and try to help me understand what's being said. Sometimes when you're in it, that, you get caught on one word, there's a lot of other words. So there was a big discussion over the word mandatory, but ultimately it did pass. And then again, the policy, the 1,000 series they're going to be looking at, and if anybody has any substantive changes that they'd like to propose, please send it down to New Jersey school boards before November. And then they had the installation of new officers, which they did in person, but everybody wasn't in the room at the moment. And so people just like kept coming into this screen from like another screen, it was a little surreal, but they installed their new officers, and there you go. It was under three hours in the day.
Well, I thank you.
You're welcome. And my computer's about to die, so I may sign off.
Okay, does anybody else have anything for old, new business?
I do, if you may, if I may.
Sure, Joe.
Well, in our last board meeting, we had a presentation in regards to naming rights of the softball field. I do know we have a policy that, I don't want to say prevents, but prevents the naming rights of the two. I guess I'm making a request, if possible, if the policy committee could consider it, looking at that policy, because it's been over 15 years, I believe, since this was looked at or made any changes. I mean, I don't know, Mr. Fletcher, if you know, but if it's?
No, I think it was 2015.
If I, I read the policy slightly differently. I read the policy as saying that the naming rights reside specifically with the board, that you won't sell them, or you won't delegate naming rights to someone else. But nonetheless, if we need to review it more carefully to make sure the wording is more accurate, that's fine. I, I understand that the board retains the right to do that, to name something, but that wouldn't, you know, as I'm making this up, take a donation from somebody to rename the library, the Pat Fletcher Library.
No, understood. All right, I guess.
But as a board, you still have the right to do that.
So maybe we could put it on our next executive agenda to discuss.
Is it possible to discuss it just for a second?
That's the specific request.
The presentation, to me, anyway, just with Title IX and considering the circumstances, I think it just might be something that we should just give a little bit more consideration.
Sure.
So if we could, that'd be great, I'd appreciate it.
I agree with Joe. Patrick, you'll put that on the exec, executive for next meeting, please? And we'll have further discussions then. Anything else for old, new, hard and blue? Nothing? Okay, we'll open it up to public comments, anything in general. Mark, I do see a hand up, so.
Yes, we have Joan Ingram.
Hi, good evening. I'm sure Mr. Urbanevich is well qualified for the middle school principal position. I'm just wondering if there was any concern or conversation about the fact that the administrative team in the high school and the middle school, as well as the superintendent, are all males? And while you do have female representation and supervisors, the day-to-day business of running the buildings is left to all males. I'm just wondering if that came up with the committee or in the hiring process?
As a distinct item, we did not consider male, female, or any other gender. We just simply looked at who would be the best candidate, and the positions that we had, oh, I'm sorry, the people who participated represented both males and females as a part of the process, and I, I think they just came to the conclusion that that was the best candidate for the position.
Okay, I do have another.
I will add, excuse me, I will add our new BA coming in is a female.
I mean, just as a female, I think it's important to balance your administrative team. If the board meetings are going to be moving to in-person starting July, I'm sorry, June 7th, does that mean it will not be able to be accessed via the Microsoft Teams anymore?
Correct.
Okay, so then, because I think this year, from what I've heard, you've had much more parent representation comments and questions than you've had in the past, is that really a good idea? Because I think that having it on Teams makes it easily accessible for parents to join the meeting and still get things done around the house and not have to leave and go up to the school to participate in the meeting, and that this allows them to participate. So I think it would be a really bad decision to take it off Microsoft Teams. Is that not entertained at all?
Well, you're expressing your opinion regarding the matter. I mean, as I explained at the beginning of the meeting, the infrastructure required to maintain that process is expensive for the board, expensive for our, our staff here, and that, but the alternative would be that we would still stream the meeting live so that there would be an opportunity for people to see it.
Okay, I don't want to presume, but I don't understand how having the meeting on a platform that the school uses is an expense. Can you just explain that?
It, there's, there's an infrastructure created because all of us would have to participate through the, through the computer process in order to have an exchange with the folks from outside. So in order to do that, we would have to create an infrastructure in here that would allow people from outside to be able to react, to interact real-time without every person participating through a computer, which is something that we're trying to get back to as the in-person opportunities, both for learning and both for conducting business.
Well, I don't want to belabor it, but my understanding is that you had very little parent participation in the meetings prior to this school year where you had it virtual. And if I, if I could be so bold as to suggest that isn't this what the teachers do in class currently, is the kids are sitting in front of them, they're also teaching to the kids at home? So I'm not sure why Mark couldn't have his teams open, and at the very least, if someone has a question or a comment, he relays that to the entire group. Like, I'm really not getting it, and that's a little frustrating because it almost seems like you're discouraging parents from participating in the meetings by taking away this virtual option.
Thank you for expressing your opinion on the matter. I don't know how else to answer you. We're trying to return, just like instruction, to in-person learning for instruction, in-person learning for, for Board of Education meetings.
Can anyone on the board answer? Because I'm not really clear that you would want to discourage parents from participating in the meetings by making it easier for them via a platform that the school already uses and a system that you've been teaching with for the entire year.
There is nothing more that the board wants to add to this, so. Mark, do we have any other questions out there? You've reached your three-minute limit, but that's why we're going to move on.
We have Kristin Varrier.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I don't know if Jesse's still on, but congratulations to the golf team as well. And welcome to the new middle school principal. I look forward to having two new administrations. I think it's a unique opportunity for them with sending districts, having new superintendents, and I think it's a great opportunity for the school, and I look forward to what comes in the future. And I just want to also address, these board meetings have always been open to, the board meetings that are open to the public are open to the public, and we're able to come to them whenever we can, and we haven't been able to, and that is unfortunate, and I do appreciate that it's been easier for people to log in, but that doesn't go away with, you're still able to go. You can, if you can log on here and you live in River at the Ordel, I don't see how it would be so hard for us to get to the board and to, to participate in this process with our children, with and for our children and the people who we've voted to entrust their education to. So that's it, thank you.
Mark, is there anybody else?
And I think Joan, you raised your hand again?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring this up to other, you know, families and parents that I know and kind of seek out some other opinions about it, so I won't say anything else at the moment. But I also just wanted to ask about what's, you know, it's great that you were doing things for the seniors, they definitely should be first in line for, you know, whatever festivities are happening, but as a parent of a seventh grader and a ninth grader who missed out on their graduations and dances and other such festivities, what are you doing for them subsequently?
I know that Mr. Pepe communicated to the families for the events that are taking place from, I think his communication went out at the beginning of the May through June, and included a variety of different activities by grade level. I believe that Mr. Friedman will be, he also sent something out, but I believe he'll be sending out something more detailed shortly. I will certainly communicate to them to make those communications prominent.
Any more comments or questions? I think we are set.
Okay, thanks, Mark. May I make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, Doug.
Claudia, you'll second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eight forty-seven, Tom.
Thank you. Have a nice evening, folks.
Yep. You too.
You as well.
We are done. Bye.